Members, we shall get started with the next session. Where we deal with the estimates of expansion on health. Before I invite the secretary to speak, I would invite members to raise their hand. To allow members to speak in an orderly and fair manner. Would the staff please clear the existing raise hand markers for members? Members who intend to speak, please press the raise hand button. In the Zoom system, I would first invite Professor Sophia Chan to speak before I open up the floor for questions. Professor Chan. Chairman, members, good morning. In the year twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. The estimated recurring government expansion on healthcare is one hundred and twenty-six point six billion dollars. Which accounts for twenty-two point five percent of the government's total recurrent expansion. From twenty nineteen to twenty to twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. The recurrent provision on healthcare has reported a cumulative growth of fifty-four percent. New and additional resources available in this financial year are mainly used for various enhanced or newly introduced public healthcare services as follows. On the support for the hospital authority, the government will continue to increase progressively. The recurrent provision for the H A according to the triennial funding arrangement agreed in twenty seventeen. Having regard to population growth rates and demographic changes. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three, the recurrence subvention of ninety point four billion dollars will be provided to the H A. Representing an increase of over sixty percent compared with twenty seventeen to eighteen. Seven point five billion dollars of which will be used for further supporting the H A in combating COVID nineteen. Including operating the Northland House Hospital Hong Kong Infection Control Center and other treatment. Or isolation facilities as well as procuring medicine, equipment and other necessities. The H A will also utilize the funding to enhance its services. Including one attracting and retaining staff to alleviate manpower shortage and constraint. Including enhancing promotion opportunities of associate consultants, reemploying retired doctors and providing a specialty nurse allowance. Two, increasing the quota for general outpatient clinics and specialist outpatient clinic attendances. Three, providing about three hundred and ninety additional public hospital beds and providing extra operating theater sessions. Four, enhancing clinical services such as radiology, pathology, pharmacy and data services. As well as services on chronic diseases including cancer, mental illness. And five, adopting new technologies to improve patient care and develop smart hospitals. In twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. An additional time limited provision of about one point one three eight billion dollars. Will be provided to the Department of Health. Three point six or rather six point three nine nine billion dollars total time limited provision for three years from twenty-one to twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-four. For taking various measures in committing COVID COVID nineteen. While an additional provision of over six billion dollars will be provided to the D H. To implement the next round of the COVID nineteen vaccination program in the coming year, the D H will continue. To strengthen the existing public health services and introduce new services, including. Replenishing the existing stockpile of antivirals for dealing with an influenza pandemic. Improving the uptake rate of seasonal influenza vaccination and launching a new program at Yamate Integrated. Treatment Center to provide comprehensive clinical care for the prevention of HIV viral hepatitis and sexually transmitted infections among men who have sex with men. And employing an integrated approach in offering counseling on drug use and mental health to clients. In terms of healthcare facilities, the H A will press ahead with the implementation of the projects under the first ten year hospital hospital development plan. We plan to seek funding approval from the finance committee for three projects under the first ten year H D P in the current legislative session and look forward to member support. In response to the northern metropolis development strategy announced in the twenty twenty-one policy address. The H A is also actively reviewing and planning for the second ten year H D P to dovetail with the government's plan. In addition, the H A will review the design of hospital projects under the two ten year H D Ps. Take into account the experience in combating COVID nineteen and will incorporate the required provisions for two or three. General wards in each selected hospital to be readily converted into tier-two isolation wards in an epidemic situation. In the first ten years H D P, the H A plans to provide not less than three hundred additional tier-two isolation beds. In five hospitals with works underway. In terms of healthcare manpower training to step up our efforts in coping with the continuous healthcare manpower shortage in the future. The government will earmark a recurrent provision of four hundred million dollars starting from the twenty twenty-three. To twenty-four financial year for the following purposes related to healthcare manpower training. These include, one, providing subsidies for students to enroll in taught postgraduate programs on healthcare offered by. University Grants Committee funded universities, self-financing post-entry institutions or public healthcare institutions. Students who have successfully completed the programs can become healthcare professionals. And two, providing five hundred extra designated places under the study subsidy scheme for designated professions or sectors. To subsidize students to take self-financing undergraduate programs on healthcare. In addition to the twenty billion dollars earmarked in twenty eighteen. To upgrade and increase the teaching facilities of the University of Hong Kong, Chinese University of Hong Kong and Hong Kong Polytechnic University. The government will set aside another ten billion dollars to ensure sufficient funding for the completion of all planned projects. Upon completion of these facilities. It is expected that the three universities will have the capacity to cope with about nine hundred extra training places for medical nursing and allied health professions. Around two point one billion dollars were allocated to the three universities in the past three financial years. To carry out some of their short-term and medium-term projects. The government will submit funding applications for another food, another two projects totaling one billion dollars to the F C in the current legislative session. And will continue to follow up with the three universities on the remaining medium and long-term projects. With a view to further upgrading and increasing their healthcare teaching facilities. On primary healthcare, the government will continue to vigorously promote district-based primary healthcare services. With a view to enhancing the public's capability in personal health management and providing community support for patients with chronic disease. Following the commissioning of the district health centers in Quicheng and Changshafo in September twenty nineteen and June twenty twenty-one respectively. We are actively preparing for a sangha of D H Cs in five other districts, namely Wang Tai Se in Two Moon, Southern District Yunlong and Shinwan. Which are expected to commence operation gradually within the year. Meanwhile, the government allocated around six hundred million dollars two years ago to subsidize the establishment of smaller interim. D H C express in the remaining eleven districts by N G Os. With a view to expediting the provision of primary healthcare services on a district level. Or eleven D H C express command services progressively last year. On the development of Chinese medicine, the government has incorporated Chinese medicine into the local public healthcare system. And has continued to allocate more recurrent resources to develop C M services. The preparation work for commissioning the first Chinese medicine hospital in Hong Kong, one of the flagship institutions aiming to promote the development of C M is actively underway. We have selected the Hong Kong Baptist University as the contractor of the service deed for C M H operations through a tendering exercise. In accordance with the service deed. The university has incorporated a company limited by guarantee as the operator of the C M H. Being responsible for its management, operation and maintenance. In parallel, the government is establishing a permanent government Chinese medicines testing institute or G C M T I. To be managed by the D H adjacent to the C M H. The G C M T I will specialize in the testing of and scientific research on C M drugs. With a view to setting reference standards for the safety, quality and testing methods of C M drugs. And empowering the C M drug industry through transfer of technology to strengthen policy control of C M drugs and their products. The design and construction contracts for the C M H and G C M T I were awarded by the architectural services department in June. The construction works commenced immediately and are expected to be completed by twenty twenty-five. We will continue to further facilitate the development of C M in Hong Kong through various measures. Including continuing the provision of subsidized C M outpatient clinics or services at the district level. Through the eighteen district C M clinics administered by the H A. Further enhancing the provision of inpatient services with integrated Chinese Western medicine treatment in H A hospitals and stepping up efforts. To support the C M sector. To along other things nurture talent, conduct scientific research and promote C M through the Chinese Medicine Development Fund. At the same time, with the country's strong support, the government will continue to strengthen the use of C M on all fronts in the fight against the epidemic. So that C M would play a more active role in the whole process of epidemic prevention, treatment and recovery. In terms of testing for COVID nineteen in twenty twenty-two to twenty-three. The F H B will allocate a total of nineteen point two five billion dollars to step up testing efforts. Including maintaining community testing services, conducting restriction testing declaration operations. Procuring rapid antigen test kits and related services. As well as meeting other testing or related source needs so as to achieve. The objective of early identification, early isolation and early treatment and cut the transmission chains in the community. As soon as possible. Chairman, my colleagues and I are happy to answer questions from members. Thank you. Thank you very much. I would now read out the names of members who wish to speak, four minutes each. And if time allows, I would consider allowing other members to speak. The eighteen members are waiting to speak, Peter Shu, Edward Lang, King Steve Wong, Kenneth Lau. Chow Siu Chong, Lam Chan Sing, Tommy Cheng, Kids and Young, Wong Yuen Shan, Ma Feng Kwok. Michael Tian, Duncan Chu, Chow Man Kong, Priscilla Lang, Lang Man Kwan, Regina Yip. So Chang Wing and Stanley Lee. Please be concise as you speak. Mister Peter Shu, four minutes. Thank you. I did not get a chance to speak in the previous session, so I might ask some questions about health. S H E zero four eight. And the question was about the utilization of C M services, which the secretary just talked about. But in light of COVID nineteen. In terms of the use of Chinese medicine, I think. It could have been adopted earlier. For elderly residents and residential care homes. It was obvious that taking Chinese Chinese medicine would relieve their symptoms. So the secretary should reinforce the application of C M F H B. F E zero two five. So that was about your work with hygiene refuse collection, public toilets, etc. The total provision went up by six hundred and thirty million dollars or eleven percent. You said the total allocation is six point four billion dollars. When you look at. Street hygiene, including markets, you often see trash piling up. You you have forty dedicated teams, I think that number should go up by fifty percent to reach sixty in terms of. Street obstructions. How are you going to tackle the problem at the end of the day? You should issue summonses after you take photos. That would be the most effective approach. For vegetables and other supplies arriving in Hong Kong every day, they arrive in styrofoam boxes. And these boxes would be recycled on the mainland and then these boxes would. Would be used to bring more vegetables to Hong Kong, but now the problem is that these styrofoams could not be returned to mainland. Let's assume these foams are measure sixty by forty-five by thirty centimeters. We have a hundred thousand such boxes in Hong Kong. That's why we see them everywhere. If they, even if they are disposed at landfills, well, the. Well, the E P D is trying to re-chew some the number of plastic bags, but we still see so many of these of these boxes lying around. I think you should have a discussion with the mainland authorities. Hong Kong has enough trash already. I have relayed this issue to the Environment Bureau, but. Nothing came of it. The wholesale markets and streets are full of these styrofoam boxes.
Secretary, there are two questions from the previous session, but if I may address the polyester foam boxes first. The F H B and the F C D together with the E N B. Will these with the mainland counterparts to take forward work. I fully appreciate what Mister Peter Shu said. Some of the polyester foam boxes are lying around on the roadside. The E N B has got in touch with some of the market traders for them to. Put the boxes in the appropriate location to facilitate collection and removal. They should be put near the refuse collection points. Earlier, we, these with the mainland authorities to reflect the situation, we will take this forward. Chinese medicine. In our battle against COVID, we have attached importance to T C M. This is an important part of our work. Earlier, we focus our attention on prevention and recovery. At the latest stage. We had the mainland specialist or T C M specialist who came to Hong Kong to offer a lot of insight and support. And there are protocols recommended for us. In the days to come, other than the prevention and recovery and treatment work in the context of COVID. We also would promote the use of Chinese medicine at home for those who are isolating at home. And also for those who are isolating in the C I F and also for the recovered people. We are providing the C M services as well. The. Eighteen Chinese medicine clinic come research centers. And also in the Chinese Medicine Development Fund, we also earmark. We also provide twenty thousand places. For the. Infected patients to receive the telemedicine service and. For medicine distribution service. And we can cover more patients as time goes by. Mister Edward Lang.
Chairman, thank you. Oh, three, seven. About the asthma patients. Mr. Speaker, I'm coming through. I can't quite hear you, Chairman. Am I coming through? Am I coming through? You have a fuzzy line there. Well. Let me try again. For the G O P C, they do have the asthmatic patients statistics, but not so much on the special. Especially outpatient clinic. So I think a comprehensive set of statistics would be important. I bring up asthma because a lot of the NGOs are telling us. That internationally they are recommending the I C S. To replace a S A B A as a drug because of a S A B A, there is a risk of relapse. And there is also a risk of death. So why don't we follow the international standard and use the I C S drug? Thank you. Chairman, thanks very much. I'm Mister Leung. Have the H A. Can supplement regarding the S O P C and the asthma treatment. And the the standard for the use of drugs. H A. Chairman, thank you. We do attach importance to this issue. Asthma is a common ailment. For serious cases, they will go to the specialist outpatient clinic. For particularly serious cases, we do have a specialist treatment for them in terms of treatment. We understand that this company seen illness. Mister Leung, I refer to beta two. After the gen energetic acorn is. By S A P A. We're trying to control the the condition with steroid. All along. We have the expert committee, which is looking at the use of drugs in the light of international practices. In the market out there, there is. New drug, there are new drugs coming on stream. And mechanism will be reviewed on a regular basis. Having regard to the express views and international practices and the views of the patients' organizations. I've got twenty seconds left. Will you be using more or safer drugs or is it because that kind of drug is too expensive and that's why you're not using it? A steroid drug has been in use for a long time. And we would assess the efficacy and when necessary, we will introduce some alternative drugs. Mister King Su Wong. Chairman, thank you. Secretary, F H B H oh five one. There's the course boundary provision of healthcare. Because of the pandemic, the administration has taken aboard the F T U's suggestion. For Hong Kong people who are having a follow-up consultation, they can get the treatment at the University of Hong Kong Shenzhen Hospital. And the healthcare voucher has been in use dramatically, six thousand in twenty seventeen and twenty thirty-nine thousand in twenty twenty-one for forward increase. Many more Hong Kong people are residing in the mainland, particularly in the G P A will have. Hundreds of or tens of hundreds of thousands of people residing in G P A. And there are many Hong Kong people in the mainland and they find this support scheme is very, very good. It's been, we have six thousand or so people for the past year or so. That have already received the service and they are happy with the quality of the H K U S Z H hospital. Now, there are lots of specialist cases that have a long waiting time. Now, in this support scheme. At the Hong Kong U Shenzhen Hospital. What is the level of subsidy for each patient? Is it higher than that in Hong Kong or lower? If it's. Not too much higher, then will the administration be regularizing this support scheme? So the people can take advantage of these specials postgame without having to come back to Hong Kong for the follow-up consultation. Can we allow the H A patients to have a choice to receive specialist surgery? In the Hong Kong U Shenzhen Hospital in Hong Kong, they probably will have to wait for four or five years. For the surgery, that this is making, this is making convenient for Hong Kong people. And also to allow an alternative choice for people who are awaiting this at the H A. And this will also take the pressure off the healthcare system in Hong Kong without having to increase the financial hourly. Or the parts of the government. So will the bureau? Be prepared to consider these options. Secretary, thanks very much, Mister Wong. We are aware that more and more Hong Kong people are residing in the Greater Bay Area. In order to create a better living condition with better healthcare system. All along. This is one of the objectives in our cooperation with the G P A. In terms of services, Mr. Wong said that with this pilot special support scheme together with the Hong Kong U Shenzhen Hospital. The lead arises because of the the pandemic. But it seems that this special support scheme has gone down very well among the users and. This special support scheme does give us a very good experience. If you want to extend this to other hospitals, that this is more like the outpatient service for other services. If we were to extend this to other services, we do have a wealth of experience to draw on. Now we keep our options open. If we want to cross the boundary and provide the healthcare services, perhaps to consider the the healthcare record. The legislation and so on. But that would not be an impediment to the provision of service. So depending on the needs. We will be liaising with the G P A and take forward this kind of work. Mister Candy Flower, thank your pardon. Mister Lau. Chairman. F H B H oh three, four. That's my question. The government is battling the fifth wave of COVID. Twenty million doses of vaccines have been procured to make sure that we will have enough. Vaccines to tackle the pandemic. The government announced that those aged sixty and above, they will be entitled to the fourth dose. To enhance the protection in remote areas, medicine as it is, and so. Don't even have the first jab. Will the administration pay particular attention to the senior citizens in the rural areas? And deploy outreach teams to vaccinate these senior citizens who are living in the rural areas. I'm sure that the rural committees will be cooperating with the government in this regard. Many people are concerned about how long the antibody will be lasting for after the fourth shot. Are we going to need the fifth and the sixth shot? The people of Hong Kong. Are anxious to find out more about this. I hope that the administration will let us know the the roadmap in the battle against COVID going forward. Secretary. Chairman. Indeed, we are concerned about the vaccine coverage for the senior citizens. A lot has been done to. Bring up the the coverage. Mister Lau referred to the remote areas, the rural areas. How can we get in touch with the senior citizens and vaccinate them? That this is one of the focuses of our work. I've been to one of the. Vaccination mobile station in the rural area to to see for myself. Mobile station in the rural area to to see for myself. And I try to understand. About the situation, there are many people who are getting the first shot or the second shot there. I did have a bit of a chat with some of the senior citizens there. So Mister Lau. Now, for Hong Yook and other organizations, if they really want to see more. Of course, um this is spearheaded by the C S V. As far as the arrangement goes, but. We are in the same um government and we are taking forward and these got to work together. If Mister Lau. Uh. Has any um particular places in mind, I would charge remote and inaccessible. We're only too delighted to make available the service for the first, second of or even the fourth short. Uh. Like you said, Mister Lau. If people have not even got their first shot, they must go get um the jab quick.
As to. The overall vaccination um rate after the fourth shot is administered. The Joint Scientific Committee. Under the D H as well as the government's um. Panel of advices have been looking at. The latest scientific evidence as well as some local research outcome. And they would. Offer recommendations. On our vaccination strategy going forward and specific strategies for different groups and we will. Announce details. When the time is right. We are very happy to work with the government. To help um vaccinate those who live in. Remote rural areas. Um. COVID is highly transmissible, even people who do not go out might contract the virus. We should not um ignore people living in remote rural areas. In terms of dissemination of information. Um. Everyone has the right to acquire. The latest information and hopefully more could be done. Mister. Chow Si Chong. Thank you. Secretary. I'd like to follow up on my own question. F H B H zero zero nine. The reply talked about the additional allocation for the H A. And um. A total of seven point seven billion dollars in additional funding has been offered to the H A. To um deal with the um. Winter surge. Of COVID. As of the thirty first of January this year. The H A has spent some eight point two billion dollars in total to fight COVID. Does this some include the um prior seven point seven billion dollars allocated? Can you tell us how the um eight point eight billion dollars were spent? I received. Complaints. In terms of. Um. The subsidies and supplies offered by different H A clusters to it to their frontline staff. Um. The standards. Were um different and that affected staff morale. So I. Uh. My other question is about Chinese medicine. As we all know. Um. There is um great demand for C M services in light of COVID. However, additional funding for C M only amounts to twenty million dollars. There was a um case in which an eighty year old um elderly person. Called a hotline multiple times. Without success. Um. That person um went to a C M clinic and lined up for two hours and still. Um. She was rejected, so that was far from ideal. At that time, the secretary. Promise. That services would be reinforced. So can you provide an update or follow up on the situation? In a moment, I will invite the H A to explain how the eight point two billion dollars were spent. Mister Chow um talked about additional um. Subsidies that would form part of the allocation. Another area of expenditure. Uh. Um. Testing services. Extra services in light of COVID manpower vaccination, etc. I would invite the H A to offer details. In terms of Chinese medicine services. In Hong Kong, many people have contracted. COVID and have since recovered. So for the um eighteen. Um. C M C T Ls, they have received a lot of patients and they are rather stressed. Currently, um a. Program under the Chinese Medicine Development Fund could um support. COVID patients who are recovering at home. We hope to mobilize. Resources from the private sector to um offer services and this is something we will continue to pursue. The H A please. Thank you. In terms of the earlier eight point two billion dollars allocation, it was mainly spent on fighting the pandemic. Including um multiple rounds of funding under the Anti-Epidemic Fund. Mister Chow talked about staff subsidy, um personal uh supplies. Et cetera. The subsidies um make up. A sizable portion of. The sum. The ele- the um disbursement of subsidies um would follow uniform standards, but in light of um. Changes to the pandemic in the past few years. Um. Our frontline staff. Uh. Also uh often. Um. Deployed across multiple posts. So in terms of communication with our staff, I believe um there could be room for improvement. And we will consistently um review the disbursement mechanisms and we would offer um. Support to our staff. Under uniform standards. Mister um Lem Chan Sing. I'd like to follow on F H B zero two two. Which was a question I'd asked about Chinese medicine clinics. In twenty twenty one. The total attendance at the um clinics at the eighteen districts amounted to one point two seven. Million for um certain districts, um they saw attendance of as much as eighty or ninety thousand. So for um districts with a high demand, could. An extra Chinese medicine clinic be open in order to answer the demand or? The to to answer the service demand in the year twenty twenty. In terms of at the attendances of the eighteen C M C T Ls, um the total was only one point oh four million. Um. While there were four hundred and forty one um practitioners. And in twenty twenty one, um the attendance rose to one point two seven million. But the um number of. Chinese medicine practitioners actually came down. So the attendance went up, but the number of practitioners actually came down. Would that affect service or lead to longer waiting time? A an elderly person um in his seventies learned about the free C M services offered by the government. He made multiple calls, but. He never had an answer, so he had to visit a the the clinic in Shatin. But the staff there could not offer help and ask him to um call again. I understand um. There is a great demand for C M services. But at least um. You you can arrange an appointment for them, so hopefully. You can improve your reservation services. Or um. Turn to mobile apps to allow elderly persons to book C M services. Secretary. Thank you very much. Mister Lam um asked questions about clinic attendance and. Manpower. We understand there is great demand for C M services under COVID. Especially rehabilitation services. Many um people in Hong Kong have recovered and um. There is a great demand for rehab services. Um. The manpower currently um at the C M C T Ls is limited. So in this regard, we will see if um anything could be done. Meanwhile, we must mobilize resources from the private sector. To help satisfy the demand. Under um the existing programs. Of the Chinese Medicine Development Fund, we would see um what could be done. The H A will work with the eighteen C M C T Ls on how we can make um C M booking service more user friendly for elderly. Citizens. Doctor Ko. Mister Lam asked about the attendance levels. In twenty 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 one and twenty two, I think um. The changes were due to the pandemic. In twenty twenty, the pandemic was rather serious. So there were changes in both our service levels and service demand. In terms of manpower. The turn, the current term government has officially incorporated C M in our healthcare. Landscape. And the. Clinics, all Chinese medicine clinics became um subvented government clinics. So there were adjustments to the um facilities or services. As for um manpower, the main change was induced by the number of um trained C M practitioners. Um. Some practitioners join and others have left. So the the attendance level was mainly um dictated by service demand. Mister Tommy Chang. Thank you. Secretary, Doctor Ko. I'd like to thank all frontline um healthcare professionals in Hong Kong for their efforts over the past two years. Um. We also express our gratitude to um all mainland support staff who have rendered support to Hong Kong. And um. The Li- Liberal Party is grateful for that. In the budget this year, funds were set aside for the H A to hire non locally. Trained doctors, which was nice to see. I think you are rather optimistic. Um. But I'm not too positive that many people um would come back. I believe, um while I realize you have been um attacked over the issue. In the ten um. Over the past ten years. Uh. We were talking about a ratio of two doctors per one thousand um people. In recent months for um. In Singapore, um there are two point four doctors per one thousand people. In that case, um based on that standard, we need three thousand more senators. Um. If we adopt the standard of five point. Um. Eight doctors per one thousand people, we need five thousand more. Doctors. Um. Of course, we will never catch up with the standards on the mainland, but um. When we look at the situation over the past ten years for universities in Hong Kong and the H A. Um. This shortage of doctors was actually underestimated. Secretary. It's not about um the level of shortage for doctors. People have to wait three to six months um to meet a consultant for the first time. We must shorten. The waiting time for appointments to acceptable levels. So you need to conduct an assessment. Secretary, are you going to work this out with the H A?
Secret- Secretary Chairman, thank you very much, Mister Jung. Healthcare manpower is something that. We are particularly concerned. We have achieved some breakthrough there. Locally. We are trying to retain uh staff. And we increasing resources. And we have from the we we hiring of the retirees and. We also have um the uh special registration ordinance in order to attract um more non locally trained doctors. The limited registration uh system um. Has um yielded some recruits, although things are moving a little bit slowly, more slowly during COVID. But still, uh the number is higher than previously. We will be moving ahead with this. As to how. We can more effectively assess the the doctor shortfall. Now, we have um the uh manpower resources reporter, which is um available every three years. Mister Tommy Joe has made a lot of comments in this regard. But when it comes to the provision of services, the waiting time. The reform of the entire healthcare system, uh the. Expansion of the primary healthcare system now. All these um certainly would. Go a long way uh towards improving the level of service. So going forward. Where we'll be looking at the ratio. We will also have regard to the local situation and in the international situation, the H A has some. The uh number of shortfall every single year. And we're also looking at increasing the resources and improving the retention. And increasing the the number of um undergraduates and so on. We are uh working on all these different areas concurrently. Once we have um the latest numbers, we will um. Make the announcement. Mister Kissinger. Chairman, thank you. Oh, one, six, eight and oh, one, six, nine. Um. About the um COVID um drug, but the government has introduced a new drugs. Towards the end of last year. The. New COVID drug has been given the approval for um clinical trial. How soon? Uh. Will the administration announce the result of the clinical trial? And B P R six um. Of um the. And Chinese Medicine Academy uh uh will be launched. And oh, one, six, nine about liver disease. Liver cancer is um the third highest killer. Hepatitis B is um the. Main cause. Seven to a nine, eighty percent of um the the uh liver cancer stems from hepatitis B. They don't have any. They don't have any symptoms. If you do not monitor the situation, twenty five percent of the cases are likely to develop cirrhosis and liver cancer. The symptoms are not apparent at the beginning and people that there is a steering committee. And they are considering a screening of the the high-risk people. I think this is a pragmatic approach. Will the government consider at the D H clinics consider providing a screening of liver cancer? For those aged thirty five and above, will there be any ultrasound test or screening for the liver cancer patients? Right, there are two parts to the question, perhaps my colleague can supplement. For new drugs, if they are effective, we will pay particular attention. And I'm sure that the D H drug department would would have regard to this. And we'll also look at the the clinical performance at the universities and so on. The hepatitis B, the director of health and the chief executive of the hospital authority are the joint chairman of this joint committee. We do have some recommendation, we have achieved some progress. Perhaps my colleagues can bring us up to date. Director. Chairman, thank you. In terms of development of pharmaceuticals, pharmaceutical office under the D H has formulated two measures. The first one is an emergency registration mechanism. If there are drugs like the M S D's monopurifier and also Paxlovid of Pfizer, we have approved them under the emergency registration system that it must fulfill the the condition of recognition in other parts of the world. And they must have the proven efficacy. And we can register them on an emergency basis now for new drugs that will be used for clinical trial in Hong Kong. We do need to have some permits for clinical trial in Hong Kong. If they are related to Covid, we will expedite them in terms of the registration. As to the hepatitis, together with the hospital authority, we have a steering committee on the prevention and control of hepatitis. And we do have a five-year plan. From twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, we have an action plan. And this is to tie in with the W H O's objective. In twenty thirty, we aim to get rid of the threat of viral hepatitis. In our action plan, we have four major areas. The first one is to enhance the awareness of all the parts of the healthcare workers and the members of the public. Second, to enhance monitoring. And third, to do more promotion. And the fourth one is some treatment. Mister Yang referred to the extension of treatment. Doctor Lam, in interest of time, can you make a brief, please? We have already looked at the mother to child transmission. If the pregnant women are carriers and they will be prescribed on the medication and there will also be serological follow-up after birth. Let's see whether Doctor Ko has got anything to add. Doctor Ko, please. What can you reduce that to writing, please? Next, Doctor Stephen Wong. Chairman, secretary, two sets of questions. F H B H oh, five, nine. About the manpower situation, I remember in October last year, the medical registration ordinance has been passed to to bring in a non-locally trained doctors. From the reply, it says that the first batch of locally, the first batch of recognized list would not be available until two months later. That's about the recognized medical schools that will be recognized. The bill has been passed for six months. We've been waiting for six months, but we need to have the the list of medical schools. Why is it we have to wait for eight months now before the the list would become available? Where do you where do you get stuck? Has the bureau made available the list to the committee or have you done so already? The secretary has been promoting these overseas. What is the response so far? And third, though, when to expect the first batch will be arriving in Hong Kong? Oh, oh, one question, oh, one about the Chinese medicine. That the the integrated Chinese Western medicine treatment program is being carried out. That will you be extending this pilot scheme to more to cover more diseases? Would this be expanded to cover more hospitals? There are eight hospitals that are covered. My second question in this regard is now for the C M C T Rs, there are eighteen all over Hong Kong and different districts. Will this be introduced to the G O P C as well? Secretary, two questions there. The first one is about the special registration committee that the law has been enacted. And after the the enactment of the ordinance, we can form the committee and for meetings to be convened. They are working very hard to come up with the list that this is not list of provided by the F H B. They would have regard to the different medical schools around the world and and their curriculum and their rankings and so on, and also the content of the curriculum. Before they they take the decision, I believe that work is in hand and the list will be made public in phases and they will release the list as they 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 go along. The second question is about the development of Chinese medicine. The F H B has been very concerned about this development. We have a development fund to turn off five hundred million dollars. And your specific questions are the collaboration between Chinese and Western medicine. Whether this will be deepened or broadened, the answer is yes. The H A takes forward this program for different illnesses for a number of years. And if we want to expand this integrated Chinese Western medicine program to other hospitals and other diseases, they will review the situation on ongoing basis. And during Covid, the contribution of Chinese medicine has been really significant. So they will be working on this going forward. And also for the eighteen Chinese medicine clinics come training and research centers, C M C T Rs. We are progressively increasing the number of available tickets for the patients for them to attend the clinics. The people are more familiar with the the practices and the people are familiar with the services that are provided there. The Chinese medicine clinics are not just about the outpatient consultation. It also covers the prescription of medication and so on. The in the G O P Cs, we don't have enough space. And that may not be a good idea to introduce this to the G O P C. So we are seeing how we can develop these eighteen centers in a better way. Thank you.
Next, Mister Ma Fengkao, thank you. I'd like to follow on my own question. F H B H zero four five. An extra seven billion dollars have been allocated to purchase anti epidemic supplies and services. And the reply mentioned that four point seven nine falls under head one four oh for testing services and to prepare for reopening of the borders. Apart from the four point seven billion dollars, only two point two billion dollars have been spent on anti epidemic services and supply. As for the four point two billion dollars, can you give us a breakdown on the expansion items? Or can you provide the details in writing? As for the renting of quarantine facilities, including quarantine centers and hotels, can you give us the respective expenses? Secretary, thank you very much. For the four point seven billion spends on anti epidemic supplies, if you wish to obtain a breakdown, we are happy to provide that after the meeting. For the use of hotels as community isolation facilities. The chief executive met with the hotel sector, asking them for support and for that, we are thankful for their support. Many hotels have been deployed as isolation facilities. Some Hong Kong residents are returning from other countries. So the demand for designated quarantine hotels have gone up. We now have more community isolation facilities with the help of the of the mainland authorities. These and some of the current facilities could be converted into other uses. We are happy to provide a breakdown of the details. I'd like to know the utilization rates of these hotels or the occupancy rates. Hopefully, the information can be offered. Secretary, we are happy to provide that information. Like I said, in our fight against the pandemic, our community isolation facilities include not only hotels, we have the Penny Space facility and at least six other community isolation facilities constructed with the help of the central authorities. So in terms of the use of hotels as isolation facilities, as the pandemic continues to ease, some of them have been converted into other purposes. We are happy to write the information afterwards. Mister Michael Tian. Thank you. I want to follow on reply number zero four five. Ten point one billion dollars include the compulsory universal testing. Many experts said that when the daily case though falls to double digits, compulsory testing can help us achieve zero cases and the borders could be reopened. The C E said we should wait for the right time and she also talked about our capability. But before she said that it wasn't realistic to implement universal testing in Hong Kong. So when the time is right, is Hong Kong actually capable of conducting universal testing? Did the government not believe that universal testing can achieve zero infections? As oral antivirals become more and more popular and the vaccination vaccination rates continue to go up and with the construction of new makeshift hospitals, anti epidemic capabilities have been reinforced and the social distancing measures will not be tightened, will not need to be tightened again unless we see more lethal viral strains. Do you agree with C C U, Secretary? In terms of compulsory universal testing earlier, the chief executive indicated that we are not giving up on compulsory universal testing. We have been preparing for the exercise, but timing is critical. So we adopt a science-based approach and would listen to the opinion of experts. In other words, you have the capability, we are preparing for the exercise. So we will continue to do our best. As for relaxation of social distancing measures, the pandemic has continued to stabilize despite a considerable number of cases. The government will continue to strike a balance between public health and the needs of the public. In the past two years or so, we have done a lot of work with different premises and the public has been supportive. We have legislation in place to impose control on different premises such as air ventilation in restaurants. We have reinforced some control in these areas. If these measures are to be relaxed, it will be carried out in a gradual and face manner. So do you agree with the experts that the extreme restrictions we saw in the past three months will unlikely will be unlikely to happen again? That depends on the development of the pandemic or whether we see any new viral strains. Even with the Omicron strain, we will look at whether there are further outbreaks and we will assess other indicators such as sewage. So it's too early to make a call right now. Mister Dunghen Chu. Chairman, Secretary, good morning. I declare that I'm a member of the H A. I'd like to talk about zero, seven, two, two, seven and zero, four, four about Covid. Many people have experienced a mental strain under Covid. And many have needs in terms of mental health. I wrote an article recently saying that there is an imbalance in Hong Kong on the provision of mental health services. We have adopted a community-based approach. It's time we maximize its effectiveness. And according to the reply, from April to December last year. And according to the reply, from April to December last year. More than seven hundred and thirty five thousand people sought help for mental health services while our mental health centers. Received some twenty one cases up more than nine hundred compared with twenty twenty to twenty one. And the demand at other. Mental wellness NGOs also went up at public hospitals. We had seven senior consultants, eleven consultants have left. And the attrition rate at Thailand West, et cetera, were especially high. And given the lack of manpower, community support is even more important. In your table, you said that there were new recruits and in some districts, there is a net growth. But in some clusters. There is a negative growth. I'd like to know whether our community support measures are adequate. And whether other plans are in place to help those with mental health needs. And support to their family members is equally important. As for the attrition of psychiatric doctors at the H A, I think training would take too long. So are you going to tackle the problem in other ways such as P V P for the Shall We Talk campaign? It is a. It is a very important platform. You told us about the number of visits or hit rate. Can we collect more data points? Can we collect information on people who are seeking health and who they are? You asked three questions for the community support program. We have an advisory committee on mental health. They offer regular services for youth and the elderly. Over the past two years or so. Many people have been put under strain mentally. Mister Chu talked about the Shall We Talk campaign. You are right that. The patients as well as their family members, including students and parents, all need help. And they are our service targets. As for psychiatric doctors. The H A can explain the wastage of psychiatric doctors and retention measures. Non locally trained doctors would be an option for us as well. I defer to Dr. Cole. This actually talked about retention of manpower, which is important over the past year. The H A has seen. High wastage across different specialties, including psychiatry psychiatric. Mister Chu talked about public private partnership. This is something we are exploring. Of course, some work has been challenging under COVID. For psychiatric services. They. Cover two main areas, one for more serious cases and the other those who suffer depression, anxiety, et cetera. The latter is more common. Hopefully, we can do something to improve the situation through P V P. For patients with mental issues. Long term relationships must be established between patient and doctor. We have sought to develop telemedicine. For psychiatric services. Fair often. Physical checks are not necessary. So these are examples of things we have done. Thank you.
Mister Chairman. For healthcare to be a success, prevention is important. Oh, two, oh, three, oh, and oh, three, five, oh, two first. There are nine PPP programs. For. Surgery, treatment and so on. And this will be extended to the. Diagnostic service for these imaging and diagnostic needs. And over the past three years. We have seen half a billion cases for the semi urgent cases and the waiting time is somewhat like three years. Will the administration be extending the imaging radiography? Services to the private sector in order to shorten the waiting time. Because otherwise, the cases would be. Pending for too long. Now, would this be extended to the Chinese medicine? So that it would be better collaboration between the Chinese Western medicine. Also, the D X C District Health Centers. I can see that the government is extending the D X Cs. Other than the islands, the eight D X Cs have received the support of district councils and they have already had the location. Will you give us the timetable for the completion on any ballpark figure? And how can you make sure that the programs will not be? Affected in their progress because this is important for for us to have a good enough primary healthcare system. Secretary, thanks very much, Mister Chow. The first question is about the public private partnership of P P P. I could defer to the H A for more supplement. The F H B. Secretary will also face, but we can hear you. Please carry on. Am I coming through? Okay, thanks. We're in support of this. One or ten billion dollars have been set aside from the previous administration for this area of work. At this area of work and Mister Chow raised the other part of the question. Later on, the hospital authority can address them. Chinese medicine. We've already started. We have the Chinese Medicine Development Fund. And we do have a program in the context of COVID. For the COVID positive patients. And we commissioned the private Chinese medicine practitioners to help out. And also in the private sector. The third one is the primary healthcare system. Mister Chow has a point that. The D X Cs are being built in different districts. We like to set up a network there. In this term of administration, we're going to have the blueprint for the primary healthcare. We're not just going to have the hardware. We do have the comprehensive plan. To improve the primary healthcare system. In terms of the D X Cs, two are up and running as of now. The remaining five. Will be accommodated in least places so they can be rolled out. They can be put into service within this year for eleven D X C expresses. And they are on a transitional basis and of a smaller scale, they all of them have been opened. There are seven operators that are covering the. D X C expresses in eleven districts. I'm grateful to the district council and the community people for their support. So we will be building these hardware on an ongoing basis. As to the location of the D X Cs and the D X C expresses, we have identified the site for them. This is not just a program that will be launched. Individually, we do have a comprehensive plan and we do identify the length for them to be built. I don't think we have time for the H A, so will please provide the reply in writing. Doctor President, Chairman. F H B H oh four two and oh four three. We all understand that nobody wants COVID. That we have a vitality rate of eight thousand people in the fifth wave. One of the reasons is there is a lack of contingency plan. We didn't build up our defense when the Obicon. Assaulted Hong Kong underestimated the impact. The fifth wave is approaching the end. We are worried about the resurgence. If, I mean, the schools are reopening and the. The students, most some of them just had have one short and they are reopening the schools. Will the students be having sufficient immunity? The last thing we want to see is to have the sixth wave. For these seven point five billion dollars for the H A to tackle the COVID whatsoever measures have been taken. Secretary, well, I take the first question first. I deferred second one to the H A. Now, Doctor Dong has always been very concerned about the situation regarding the reopening of schools. The. C E has been discussing with the Education Bureau about this. The C H P will be monitoring the possible outbreak. Doctor Dong has got a point there. We do have plans in place to guard against any outbreak. So the daily R A T test is to enable us to. Get to grips with the numbers. When the number hits a certain level, that C H P will take precautionary measures. As to the vaccination, this is terribly important for young people. It's just as important for elderly people, but it is also important for the young people. So we have to step up our efforts to ramp up the vaccine coverage. Doctor Dong has a point for the contingency plans. But to use your words, if there is any resurgence. And if the COVID situation were to reverse, we must have some contingency plan to curb the COVID. So in this scenario of. The in-person classes being reopened, we do have some contingency plan. Doctor Cole. Now with this extra funding, we are making preparation for the situation. Like we have to have the equipment, the the medical supplies, the operation of the A W E. And all the support services for the hospitals. The most important thing is the procurement of medication. Over the past year or so, we have the new oral antiviral. We made every effort to procure the right amount. So that we are fully prepared to guard against any possibility of a resurgence or the sixth round, sixth wave. I hope that they will be more precise in formulating the contingency plan. We don't, we shouldn't really repeat what we experienced during the fifth wave. I think they have to be more specific. The secretary said that they've got the contingency contingency plan, although she didn't tell us the specifics in the school context. I don't think we have time for Dr. Cole. Perhaps this can be done in writing. With Mister Lemon Kong, this is Virginia, Mister So Chong Wing and Mister. Mister Nisi Wang. And I think we can bring in Mister Dennis Lam, Doctor Dennis Lam and Mister Holden Chow as well. Perhaps someday they will take three minutes so that we can fit in as many members as possible. Mister Lemon Kong. Chairman. Oh, seven, nine and eighty about dental service. The dental care program for the elderly homes, they have the outreach teams. There are many senior citizens. Who do not use the daycare center services. And they would. Go for the outpatient service. Or sometimes they are using the healthcare voucher scheme or they use the C C F services. Prevention is always better than cure. It would be too late for them to deal with the dental problems. If. If it is, if the problems become acute and that would also affect the health of the seniors innocents. And I hope that the administration would do more in a way of prevention for the senior citizens in terms of dental care. The other question is the outpatient service for dental care. Because of COVID, the number of tickets distributed has been reduced by twenty five percent to and fifty percent respectively. And in terms of utilization rate, other than the remote areas, we are talking about ninety nine percent of one hundred percent. Post COVID, we would expect the government to resume. The level of consultation, but will you be making up for the? Shortfall in the past, many senior citizens, they may put up with the dental problems for six months or more. If you catch up with the. The the shortfall, I'm sure that is something that is well worth considering. Before I call upon Professor Chen. There are some problems with the screen, perhaps we can. Sort out. The technical problem before we continue. Let's wait a bit. And let's hope that the F H B can sort out the the screen. Let's take a break for five minutes. And we may have to extend the the meeting because with the last speaker will be Mister Holden Chow.